All right, I'd like to call the August 13th, 2019 meeting to order. Commissioner Powell, if you would, lead us in grace, and Mr. Perry, if you would, lead us in the pledge, please.
If you so desire, would you pray with me, please? Our heaven father, we thank you for this beautiful day and all the signs of your might and power. Help us to realize our place in your world and our dependence upon you. Pray blessings on this meeting that we have the privilege of holding in this country. Pray for those that are defending these rights all over the world. We pray for their safety and well-being and return home. Leading guide our thoughts, our decisions. Today that they will be noble, they will be right, they will be honorable in your sight, and the people of person county. In your son's name we pray, amen.
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, we got a couple of things to adjust on the agenda. We're gonna remove item number eight. They are not quite ready to bring that to our attention yet. And we need to add a second closed session, which will actually become the number one closed session. And the one that's already on your sheet would be, uh, become number two. And I guess that was just what I got to announce. Anybody want to add or delete anything?
Move for approval as amended.
Okay, all in favor say aye, and opposed, no, all righty. I would like for Mr. Ray Puyam come forward, please. Ray Puyam has served the people of Person County during his tenure working for Person County as a deputy at the Person County Sheriff's Office. And Ray Puyam has served as citizen of Person County with honor, integrity, sincerity, and dedication, providing accurate concise services for 20 years, November 99 through July of 19. Ray Puyam has earned every respect and admiration of all who have known him and worked with him throughout his career. Whereas Person County, county of person recognizes the many contributions Ray Puyam has made to the county and offers him sincere best wishes for his retirement. Now therefore, I, David B. Neal Senior, Chairman of the Person County Board of Commissioners, do hereby extend this resolution of appreciation to Ray Puyam for continually striving to make Rockspur and Person County a better place to live and work. Mr. Puyam?
Appreciate your service.
You got any words of wisdom you wanna?
Thank you.
All right. I need a motion to go into a public hearing for community transportation program application. Some of, all in favor say aye. All right, the public hearing is now open. Mr. LaBarre, if you would, get us started.
Good morning, I'm here for the fiscal year '21, which will start next July. Community program for transportation. We are asking for a total of $357,835. Local share of $44,921. We're replacing two vehicles, or asking for replacement of two vehicles. Also asking for replacement of seven camera systems, which are seven years old. Then we also have the administrative side, which covers a good chunk of our administrative cost. And so we're here asking for your approval of it.
All right, anybody got questions from Mr. LaBarre?
The cameras are for personal, I think.
No, we have four cameras in each of the vehicles.
Oh, okay.
For its safety purposes.
Anybody getting a question?
Motion to move out of public hearing.
Has anybody else that's getting something, anybody else want to speak to this matter? Okay, Mr. Perry, you got a little hint of motion.
Motion to move out of public hearing.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're back in regular session with the pleasure of the board. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? We got any informal comments?
We do not.
All right, thank you. All right, everybody have a chance to look at the consent agenda? Anything they wanna pull out and talk about?
Move for approval of consent agenda.
All right, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving right along. Ms. Clayton, if you would, come forward and...
Good morning, I am here to request the grade and statement of the public health nursing director one position that was eliminated from the appropriate budget in June. This would provide our agency with nurse leadership. And also, we would, as mentioned in previous meetings, eliminate a licensed practical nurse or LPN in one processing career assistant position. The elimination of those would offset the cost of the nursing director position. And there would be no additional appropriations needed for this request. And I am also requesting the approval of unfreezing of all the health department positions, with the understanding that the positions would only be filled with, as needed, and with the county manager's approval at that time.
All right, anybody got that? What do you want to talk about?
So the other positions you want to unfreeze and substitute that you're willing to cut? We unfroze three, so what are those other positions and what they told?
There are two clinic nurse positions, as well as a community health technician position. And one of those clinical nurse positions actually is part of our care management program. And would do our postpartum care visits.
How long were these vacant before we froze them?
The community health technician had been vacant for three months. We did have applications for that one. The other public health nurse too have been part of the reorganization in regards to the care management. So that one had been vacant for a few months as well. The other clinic PHN two had been vacant since May.
What steps are you taking to cross train some people, so that you don't leave as many people?
Well, right now, I do not have the strength to cross train. Prior to this, we were, as we had individuals hired, we would run them through the clinic training so they could fill in any position in the clinic, as well as our immunization ring.
Your participation in these programs, are they up, low, where about, are they normally, or average?
Well, right now, as you know, we're only offering, we're not offering attorney programs, we're not offering family planning services or LTR services, because we do not have the staff to do that. Prior to that, prior to that, the numbers were lower than we had seen in previous years. And that's why I'm requesting the freezing as needed, so we would not unfreeze the position and hiring as needed. So that if such time the numbers resume back to the previous levels or higher, then we would have the authority to hire those positions for the county manager.
So if we unfroze today, you wouldn't necessarily go out and advertise these tomorrow?
No, sir.
Janet, remind me again the position you had for the health, the nursing supervisor prior to this, the one you're requesting back, prior to the health nursing director one?
In January, prior to January 24th, the position had been listed as a public health nursing supervisor two.
All right, how many people do you have working in the clinic?
Currently?
Well, how many positions are there that were budgeted for this year before the freeze?
I believe the froze, froze eight positions.
I understand that, but I mean, how many people were have, how many people were in that department? Was it 15, 20? I mean, how many people were in the clinic itself?
The public health nursing supervisor or director position supervised 13 physicians, and three of those are care management, so that would be 10. Including lab, there were two physicians in the lab, which I'm answering to, I'm going to make one of those.
All right, just so the general public knows and whoever's watching on this, the biggest problem I have with the whole situation is the, because the majority of the people that used to come to the health department now have insurance. They go to the doctor themselves, they don't use the health department. And they've been averaging seeing 12 to 13 people a day. And so that was my reason for asking if we could cross train, because, you know, if you run it somewhat like a business, you would have probably four people there, as opposed to how many you said. So that's, that's my biggest concern going forward. I would like to know if all of those people are absolutely necessary. How many, how many people can you cross train? I mean, if you were doing it full profit, how many people would you have working there? And I'm not saying the health department's supposed to make a profit. All I'm saying is, we've got to apply some kind of business logic to this, because it is a business. You're running, you are the CEO of about a three and a half million dollar business. And we need to make sure that it's run like one. And so anything we can do to increase efficiency is something we've got to do. I mean, for us to continue to throw money out to something that is not being used. You've got two choices. You can either cross train and eliminate positions, or you can offer more services to the county. So, you know, you can create a need for the health department, which would benefit the county and the citizens. Something simple like giving the magic football players a basket, magic players physicals, or something to that degree. And so that's my, that's my biggest question with the whole situation right now.
Ms. Clayton, may I ask a question, please? In the past, there were several revenue streams that were eliminated from your department. Would this, approving your request, would that reinstate any of those revenue streams?
Yes, by approving this request, then we could begin rebuilding our team or our staff so that we could provide those services that we're not able to provide right now. And in order, yes, we do bill Medicaid and other insurance companies to receive revenues, but we also receive several grants, and we only receive these grants if we are providing services. And that total roughly is about $500,000.
Janet, prior to the freezing of these positions, were people in these positions to run these programs? I mean, were you receiving these funds a year ago, or were we slowly going downhill then? So you weren't seeing the revenue you would see in the past?
No, we were all, we were receiving all of the grant funds that I've just mentioned. Those positions were filled. The revenues that are being affected, not only right now are the grant funds, but by not providing services, we're not allowed, you know, we can't bill Medicaid and insurance companies to bring that revenue in, except for immunization services that we are providing.
So prior to the freeze of these positions, were you having to call patients and say that you couldn't see them that day because of lack of staff? Or was this just, was this just an issue after the freeze?
After the freeze, we had staff in place and were providing clinic, provider clinics until July 8th. And that was the last day we had a provider clinic.
So if you give back the clinic nurses, or whatever you need, starts doing the STD and the pregnancy checkups and things, if we do it today, next week, what do you anticipate as far as service?
There will be no change.
The same 10 to 13 a day, or?
There will be no change, because it's a rebuilding process. We have to hire the individuals, the individuals will have to be trained in order to provide those services.
So was it not a rebuilding process before they were frozen, since they were vacant? These were all vacant positions that we froze? So were you in that process of rebuilding then, as far as marketing, advertising?
Yes, and actually, this year, as part of the grants that I've mentioned, there were funds and they're allocated for community education and outreach in regards to marketing. But I cannot do that until I have individuals in place to provide the services.
Do you provide any type of, how often does your board meet, monthly?
Monthly, yes.
Do you provide any type of monthly report to them as far as patients seen, or anything like that? And your public health nursing supervisor two, the position you had prior to January, what was that salary and benefits?
The nursing supervisor two salary with benefits is $87,589. That's with benefits. The actual salary is $63,085.
Now we already sub out some of this work to Person Medical, don't we?
We are, we are referring patients there, as well as to Durham County, because not all patients are being able to be seen at Person Family, yes.
How many other services came to sub out?
You have, you can assure other services. The question remains, what are you doing for your citizens, though? Those that have transportation barriers, we have worked with Glenn and PAX to provide that service, but we, if it's a barrier for them to receive care, then we at the health department have to pay for that transportation. So it's a question of priorities. Do you want to sub out services and require patients to go outside of the county? Or not receive the care, or end up in an emergency room with the health department? Or STDs or other things that could have been treated at the health department?
Will there be any need for your department to contact an outside provider for approval to do any type of services?
To, because you're being...
At one point, you were in a position, you needed to contact a physician. And that physician approved you to perform some sort of services.
Yes, we have two medical directors. One is through due for our OB-GYN services, and then we have one who covers our clinical disease and immunizations.
So you have to contact an outside?
If there are any questions, and if our standing orders do not cover a service, then we have to contact. But since we do not have a physician on site, then we have to have that communication line.
Does that happen frequently?
It happens occasionally, yes.
My issue with unfreezing the other positions is that we froze them in budget time to kind of get a better idea of services offered and services that needed to be offered up there, given there has been somewhat of a decline in participation in some of those services. And I just don't know, a month later, if we actually had to answer those questions. And that's why I asked about the monthly reports. I don't know if we need to request to see maybe some of the previous months, to see clients that have been served, or wait a few months to see, you know, who's going up there the next, till the first of the year. I mean, I don't think we got those questions answered, as far as what should we be offering, or what shouldn't we be offering?
I think we've spent enough time on this issue.
A month? You got the answers? Can you give them to me?
I have complete confidence in the director of the health department.
So do, so how many people are, did we see in June? Do you have that answer?
I have complete confidence in her. We shouldn't, I shouldn't have to know that as a commissioner. With that being said, I make a motion to approve the health director's request.
All right, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, one of the reasons I think we got involved in all of this was I didn't just play and answer that question, but the, uh, there was an abnormal turnover rate over there in a certain section. And I'm not exactly sure, I know how many numbers it was, but it was something like... Count the people that retired early and, and flowies that resigned, or whatever what happened. And I'm talking about physicians, I'm not talking about people. If we're gonna talk about people, you'd be in closed session. But was it up like 13, 17? How many was it that we had, that you had in that area? So there's something else going on internally that's causing some of this. And when you got that going on, then it affects how many people you're seeing and different things. One of my reasons, and I stated that at the time during the budget when we voted to hold those positions, was to bring attention to that. And I hope that you and the board of health are addressing that. We had a joint meeting with the board of health. And what we really accomplished or didn't accomplish, I'm not sure that I know. So, you know, I hope that's something that you're looking at as well, is trying to get these programs up and going. And I realize, Mr. Neal said, it's not like it used to be. It used to be that every service that you got over there, it had to do with, almost anything to do with public health, you had to go to the health department to get it. You had to go get your shots, you had to go do your other things. When we were kids and lined up over there getting polio shots, you couldn't get them anywhere else. So times have changed, and I realize that some of the medical stuff changed over the last two years. It allowed services to be offered by more facilities. So, you know, I understand all of that. But, you know, some situations, some stuff going on, that you and your board of health need to get worked out, you know? And I'm gonna leave it at that. Because there's a dirty government body. While the position goes, I'm, I'm not sure, whether you need to direct her or go back to the, or is it the public health nurse supervisor position? I don't know if you could operate with that, with the reduction and what's going on over there. I don't, maybe I don't quite understand why that wouldn't be more appropriate. Maybe some other discussion or comments?
On the health nursing director one position and the public health nursing supervisor two position, it's not much difference in salary, about two, two grand. But what about qualifications? Would someone that would qualify for the nursing supervisor two not qualify for nursing director one?
There is that potential, because it requires more experience.
So if you had one, you could promote it into the other one, if they stayed long enough and got experience?
It would require reclassification of the position again to, if we had it changed to the supervisor two, in order for it to be a director one again, it would require state reclassification.
Do those salaries overlap?
The salary, the minimum salary for the nurse supervisor two is $63,085. The help, the director one is $66,239, that is salary alone. And please keep in mind the competitive area that we are, we reside in, in regards to nurses as well.
Ms. York, you getting the one you want?
Well, in some ways, you know, the decision to sell Home Health and Hospice went down a eerily similar road. We weren't seeing enough patients, knew that we needed to do something, we're having some turnover issues. But when we sold that, we knew that there was a market for it. So this is a bit different, because we don't really have a market for our services. But we have our clients and customers and patients who do need a community health department. So I think Janet's point about whether or not we're serving our community is important. I mean, we are right now encouraging young pregnant mothers to have to track to Durham for OB care. And I don't feel like that's a good thing for our community. So, you know, our question is really about, as Janet has said, rebuilding the health department so that we can provide services that will meet the needs of our community. And I think that's a big challenge that we have. You know that we have to have the nursing leadership... Um, you know that we have to have the nursing leadership position in place in order to draw down the state funds. So we have to have a position. Right now she is operating without. So we need at least, you know, whether you go back to the previous position before it was reclassed, that will delay the hiring process because we have to go through the state and the savings are minimal. So my suggestion would be that we work with Janet and her board to put in a plan, um, for rebuilding the Health Department and we continue to monitor it on a regular basis to see, uh, how we're doing with filling the positions, what our patient numbers are looking like in the clinic. And we find ways that, you know, we can help support each other because we want a successful clinic that's serving our community. We're aware of the turnover issues and I think all of these are, are really linked together. But I think a first step in trying to, to put it, the Health Department back on its feet and move forward is to get her the positions, um, that are critical so that she can start drawing down funds and we can start putting the services back to our residents. That's my thought.
Well, given Commissioner Preier comments, um, I'm not questioning your company, so I don't know what anyone else on this board is, but I only can speak for myself. But I do make decisions based off facts and information I have before me. And we asked for some information in July and I don't think one month gives us that information to, to make that decision to just go back to where we were prior to the budget and some of the questions that we had. I would offer a substitute motion to approve a public health nursing supervisor two position, which will give us a, uh, compliance with the state and ask that, um, instead of this approval for these positions being to the county manager, that while you're rebuilding and advertising and you have a plan to go forward with the clinic or whoever you're gonna fill these positions and you have someone you're ready to hire, if you come back to the board, that way we'll, we know kind of what's going on.
All right, everybody understanding the motion? Any more discussion?
I stick with my original motion. You've heard...
We'll vote on it.
Well, well, now if a substitute motion gets...
Well, true.
Passed.
I might suggest that we bring Janet's Board Chair back to this board for a discussion among the boards and allow Janet and I to work together on the day to day rather than the Commissioners having to, to direct Janet, uh, when she actually reports to a board herself. I feel like getting the Health Department Board a little more engaged, um, might help Janet feel supported by her board.
That could happen in the raise motion, then.
Good. He was suggesting she come back to this board.
I'm freezing it, but if she asks us for approval by you, what I'm trying to do is try to keep us in a loop that if we're marketing, we're doing all of these things that we're rebuilding...
Right.
As the Health Department says they need to do, we'll be doing.
Yeah.
And I hope that we are abreast of what's going on to rebuild.
Sure.
And if you have rebuilt this service and now you're needing a position, then I think we should know because obviously we're in this because people felt like we need to know what was going on there anyway.
Right.
And I'm not saying that we need to govern or take over or anything, but if someone calls me, I like to have a question for them and I appreciate going to our local hospital and hearing bad mouthing of our Health Department or there's lack of staff, so they couldn't serve my family member or so on and so on, you know? And I don't know what to say to that because I'm not on the Board of Health. I've never served on the Board of Health since I've been on this board. And, um, I think we kind of need to know what's going on. It's all over social media, it's been on the news, it's sending community. And as people like to say, it is Roxboro.
Mr. Chairman, do we call with question, please? All right. We'll vote on the substitute motion first. All in favor of the substitute motion, say aye. Aye. Okay. All opposed?
No.
Okay. All right. Mr. Doug Young. He would come help us with our next problem.
Gentlemen, on June twenty-fifth, the State Marshal, the Fire Marshal's Office came to my office and, uh, well, actually called my office, had me meet them at Woodsdale Volunteer Fire Department. At that time they announced that, um, they would be performing a unannounced non-essence inspection on the Woodsdale Volunteer Fire Department based on some complaints, which I was not involved indirectly with that inspection, but I was there during the inspection. On June twenty-sixth, I briefed the county manager. On July twen-, uh, July third, the State Office of Fire Marshals called me and met with me and anna-, uh, told, advised me that, at that time they was opening up an internal po-, uh, opening up an investigation on their certification based on the findings of their unannounced, uh, non-essence inspection. So between that time, the county manager and I had numerous meetings, uh, to make plans, uh, or pre-plans on, uh, for that service and what we may and may not hear from the, from the overall investigation. Both short term and long term and there, and also we had met numerous times with GIS to look at some possibilities of mapping. Later on, on August the ninth, we received a notification from the State Marshal, Fire Marshal's Office of the decertification effective October eighth, which you have in front of you. That is a pretty much summary of what's been going on. I will now turn it over and we ask the State Fire Marshal's Office to come here and be available to go over the findings of that. And I would like to introduce to you Derek Causey, Deputy Director of the State Fire Marshal's Office to go over the findings of that.
Good morning. Thank you for letting us be here today. Uh, County Commissioners, on behalf of, uh, State Fire Marshal's Office and Commissioner Causey, um, just want to brief you on our findings of a, uh, of an unfortunate situation in terms of the Woodsdale Fire Department and what we found on the surprise inspection that, uh, Mr. Young spoke to. Briefly, I want to go over some history, um, over some things that we have been, uh, trying to do, being very proactive, working with the Woodsdale Fire Department over the last two years. So, uh, if you will, if y'all will, please direct your attention to the first page. Uh, this started with a, with a inspection that we had on January the fifth, two thousand seventeen. And, uh, on that, um, it was founded, uh, in accordance with administrative rules. With, with our process, what we call the nine S process, all this is housed within the North Carolina Administrative Code, which is of course, um, directed by North Carolina General Statute. And so, uh, upon that, upon that inspection, uh, what we noticed was, was under the old rules, um, the fire department was required to have twenty-eight members and they were shorter members, okay? And so, uh, also, um, they were not reporting their incidents, their structure of fire incidents as required by the Administrative Code. Uh, this notice of placement on what we called at that time was sent to Aaron Lampin that they were on probation. Then January eleventh of two thousand seventeen, the Woodsdale Fire Department and Person County were sent a notice of non-compliance based on the results. And at that time we received a notification from Battalion Chief Greg Freeman of Woodsdale Fire Department and then James Royster, President of the Woodsdale Fire Department, Person County Director of Municipal Services, Doug Young. And that, that was an acknowledgement that, um, that they had not provided our written acknowledgement that, uh, provided OSFM with corrective action plan. And that's part of the process. The department has to tell us how they're gonna fix the issues. That way our ratings inspectors can come alongside them, answer any questions they might have and develop and help them get back to reinstated status by the nine S rules. And then, uh, so that is why the corrective action plan is so important to us. It's, it's, it's a way to communicate the expectations of both sides and then we can come along the department and help them out and be successful. On February first of two thousand seventeen, a letter of acknowledgement of probationary status was received by our office from Battalion Chief Greg Freeman. So that started a year-long process, um, and then in April sixteenth of two thousand eighteen, our administrative rules underwent a change based off of some legislation that was passed the previous year where the legislature asked us to consider new rules in lowering the number of volunteers, uh, within, within the stations because of, as y'all are well aware, recruitment and retention issues within the volunteer departments. Uh, those rules were rewritten at that time and they went into effect in January of eighteen. So what we done is with the departments that we had across the state that were at that time were under, were under that probationary status or non-compliance, we basically reset the clock on them, so to speak. We let them start over again under the new rules. And we came alongside the departments once again, explained the new requirements, educated them and let them know that anything that they needed, we would help them out. So that was sent on, on April sixteenth of two thousand eighteen. Uh, on November fifteenth of two thousand eighteen, uh, a notice of probation. So basically what happens in the rules that we have today, a department, once they're put on non-compliance, they have six months. And over that six months, we review different reports that they send us, um, we're, we're speaking with them, uh, almost on a monthly basis, uh, free to answer any questions they have. So when they're on non-compliance, we come back after six months. When we're there for six, at that six-month mark, which was November fifteenth of two thousand eighteen, what we allow is, um, at that inspection, we look at everything that they've done up to that point. If they have corrected all the concerns that we noted in the first inspection or the first rating inspection, we take them off of non-compliance and they're back as, in terms of what we call full nine S stats, they're, they've checked the box, so to speak, they're good to go. On November the fifteenth, what we, uh, what we found was Woodsdale was still struggling. And, um, and so at that time they went from non-compliant status to probationary status. So probationary status, when that, when that occurs, they have six more months to correct the deficiencies that we found. Once again, working with our staff, working with our rating staff, we're here and, uh, we're here to help them out in any way that we can. So on November fifteenth, um, some other issues were, were noted. Once again, it was the corrective action plan still wasn't being met. There were still some issues that were, that we were seeing. So we gave them six more months. On May twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, uh, two of our ratings inspector, Tony Bailey and the ratings supervisor, Dave Summy, who's here with me today, came in to do the, the final probationary inspection. On May twenty-second, upon their arrival, they stayed here a good portion of the day, pored through their records, interviewed, uh, different members with them that were there, that were present in the department that day. And it was noted that we felt at that time that they had met the requirements of the probationary status. And then on May twenty-third, we advised the department at that time that they were coming off of probationary status and were gonna be reinstated as a full nine S recognized department. On June the nineteenth, our office received via email a complaint, uh, from a citizen stating, uh, specifically that there were irregularities been found by members of the department. They further stated that the complainant's, uh, street address was being used for current fire department roster that was submitted during the nine S rating inspection on May twenty-second. And there were several other irregularities that were brought to our attention in terms of the number of members, the, where these members lived and some other concerns. Then on June the twenty-first, we received a phone call from a member, uh, of the department who contacted our office saying that she needed to be removed from the roster because she was no longer with the department. And she was concerned about what, what she had heard and what was going on. She sent a follow-up email requesting that we come in, look at it and to make sure her name was removed off of the roster. That in turn, uh, started, along with the June nineteenth complaint, the re-inspection for us to come in and do a surprise inspection of the fire department based off of what we heard was information that was not correct, that was presented to us on our May twenty-second inspection. Upon our June twenty-fifth inspection, um, I would like to direct your attention to exhibit nine, which is towards the back of the report. And it's called the complaint finding. So it's towards the back. And just briefly, what I'll do, I'll just cover these briefly and then I'll be glad answering questions that you might have that I can't answer at this time, at that time. So what we actually do, we come in and this section of the report and we put this, the specific administrative code that the department was in violation of at the time. So, um, when you look at the, when you look at the first page of, of the complaint finding report, uh, what we noticed was, was, um, there were no annual meetings held in each of the last three years. The annual meetings were directed by the bylaws of the department. That's something, to be a nonprofit corporation in State North Carolina, you file your bylaws with the North Carolina Secretary of State. They're recognized as a nonprofit 501(c)(3) corporation. And as such, they have to, there, there are certain things they have to do by their own bylaws that they set themselves as an organization that they have to do. So we found that, uh, in, in fact, in the last three years, they had not met, um, specifically the meetings that they needed to meet by Article III of their own bylaws. The county contract that was provided on May twenty-second, two thousand nineteen and confirmed by James Royster and Doug Young was signed by Greg Freeman, the Secretary of the Board of Directors. It was indicated to OSFM staff that Greg Freeman was the interim chief and the treasurer. The list of board members provided to OSFM staff was following. So when we came in those days, we, we were told this was the board. Well, the issue with that is, it's not enough board members. Their bylaws specifically called out how many board members have to be on the nonprofit board. So, once again, it's in conflict with their own bylaws. Their bylaws are not required, there's not a certain way they have to have their bylaws written for us, as the State Secretary of State and nonprofit corporations do. If you flip the page over, uh, once again, you'll see the next administrative code. After we reviewed, uh, the monthly inspection records, um, we made copies of all those monthly inspection records, uh, while we were on site, June the twenty-fifth. When we were going through and we were looking at that, uh, we were trying to determine the validity. Based off of some interviews that we had had, um, coming in prior to that, um, it was stated that the truck checks were not being completed as was documented at our May twenty-second meeting and we needed to look at them. So, um, whenever we pulled the truck checks and apparatus specification sheets and their annual maintenance, uh, we found some concerns there. Uh, we found, um, basically what it looked like on the forms is all the forms have been checked off by one person and then simply they changed the data at the top of the form. So we have all these in our possession and, uh, and we have those. Also, no regular equipment maintenance was provided during the inspection. No maintenance records were provided to meet the requirements in this section. Once again, the administrative code requires that apparatus are checked and maintained in accordance with manufacturer specifications and that records be kept. So that's the, uh, that's the summary of that section. Staffing levels is probably one of the biggest areas that we found concern with. And the staffing levels on the next page, an administrative code specifically spells out how many members they have to have. Woodsdale Fire Department has two station locations. Based off the administrative code, they have to have, for the primary station location, they have to have fifteen members. And for their substation, they have to have four, so that's a total of nineteen members. Uh, the day that we showed up on June twenty-fifth, we already knew that they were below the seventeen because of some of the complaints we got, so some members had, had left the department. So we already knew that they were, they were not, they were, they were again not in compliance or nine S. Then, um, as we started looking at the names on the rosters, and this is what really called out concern in the initial email that caused the complaint on June the nineteenth, was that a lot of the members that were on the roster were either not on the department or if they were on the department, they hadn't been seen in several years or several months, I should say. And they were also not getting the thirty-six hours, thirty-six hours a year required training. In the State of North Carolina, by North Carolina General Statute, a firefighter has to get thirty-six hours of training annually. The fire department has to provide forty-eight hours a month or forty-eight hours a year of training on an annual basis. So once we, once we realized that and we started looking, uh, we realized very quickly that, um, that we had some additional membership concerns other than the two that had just left, we now knew that there were some additional concerns that we had based off the training records that we found. When we were going through the training records, uh, we, we have a system that we use where we catalog all the training hours. When we, when we have to do a deep dive like this and we're in, we're, we're looking at an investigation, when we go in and we start looking, um, we really start documenting a lot of different things. And we found several issues with the training records that were on file at the fire department. And that takes me to the next, next area under the training. If you flip the page over, as I stated, those firefighters gotta have thirty-six hours of training. The fire department has to provide forty-eight hours. Um, it was noted that, um, you know, in the case where thirteen firefighters have been on the fire department for four months or less. So basically what happens is, is trying to work with the departments because we understand. I'm a volunteer firefighter myself in my community and David's a volunteer firefighter in his community as well. So we understand what's going on in the communities and how hard it is to get these volunteers. What we do is we prorate that training for them. So if you've been there, if you've got to have thirty-six hours a year and you've been there four months, we'll prorate that out and we'll give you credit for those people, okay? Um, but what we had found was, was... But what we had found was, was after we prorated that training, what we found was, based off of interviews and other areas, some of that training had not occurred, and some of that training was falsified. Also, we found another issue within the department's bylaws, Article Section, Article VII, Section Three states that each firefighter shall attend four hours of training per month. That's their requirement. So their requirement by their bylaws is above and beyond what the state requires of the 36 hours. Okay? But once again, they were not meeting their own bylaws. Communications and alarms, this is an area that caused great concern amongst our staff. And what we found based off of doing some background investigations and looking at some, looking at names and finding out, and based off of interviews with members, there were several members of the department that lived in Cleveland County, in the Cleveland County area. So Cleveland County is between Gastonia and Shelby on the South Carolina border. Okay? We know of at least four, if not five, members that are listed on the roster that live in that area of the state. So the issue with that is, is when you go to give credit for somebody that's going to be ready to respond in your community, okay? When we looked at it, there was no way for them, for those to be notified via a credible, a credible device. Fire departments, as you know, wear pagers. And those pagers are activated by Public Safety Answering Point, or the PSAP, or your 911 center, through a tone-based system. So upon receipt of a 911 call, the dispatchers activate a tone, sets the pagers off, and they give voice duration in terms of the type of incident, the location of the incident, any, any subsequent information so the volunteers can respond. And quite frankly, there's not a paging system in the state of North Carolina that will reach from Person County to Cleveland County. There's not one out there. So the credibility of those people, now what's interesting is, those, those people that were on the roster had Person County addresses, and they live around the Cleveland County So that is the summary of the findings that we had that caused the concern, which led to the decertification notice to Woodsdale Fire Department on August the 9th. Administrative code specifically states that the fire department has 60 days, which is October the 8th, if they want to appeal this. If they want to appeal this by administrative code, they, they can do that. There will be a hearing officer that will take that. They'll schedule the appeal hearing, and at that appeal hearing, Woodsdale will be allowed to present their side, will present our reports, and the subsequent information evidence that we have. And the hearing officer will make a decision at that point. Depending on how that hearing goes, you know, and, and what happens, Woodsdale will be advised in of their other recourse if they so choose.
Has Woodsdale missed any calls?
I can't speak to that, sir.
Had they had any kind of fa, uh, equipment failure?
I can't speak to the equipment failure that they've had. I, I can't speak to that. That would have to be, Mr. Young? We're not aware of the day-to-day operations of the department.
Right. I have a question. Yes, sir. If the law was well, if what you're telling us, the people that are on this roster are falsified, do y'all continue investigating that, or who, who does that fall under?
So I can't, I cannot comment on any current or future criminal investigations that may be ongoing. I can't comment on that. What I will tell you is, is this investigation, this, this report is based off of administrative code, administrative code on it. Okay? So I can't speak to other things. But what I will tell you is, is our legal staff feels like we're standing on all fours based off of what we're doing in this document, with how we've handled other these certifications in the state of North Carolina.
Will their, will their appeal hearing be heard within the 60 days?
Excuse me, sir, I'm sorry.
Will their appeal hearing be heard within the 60 days? So I'm understanding that a letter was given to them 60 days later, they're no longer certified. So whatever that date that they're no longer certified, if they appeal, will that be heard before that date?
So they have 60 days to respond to Department of Insurance, off State Fire Marshal, if they, if they so, if they want to do that. At that point in time, the hearing officer will schedule that. That could be anytime within that time. I, I can't speak for the hearing officer. They'll look at the doc and they'll figure out their schedule.
I'm just asking, is the 60 days from the letter, that's the hard date, so the appeal, everything, they will know if they will be certified through the, recertified by the appeal or whatever, by that date?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. What will happen is, is they have 60 days. Okay? The hearing, once they say they want to appeal, I can't speak to the date that the hearing will be. It could be after October the 8th.
It tones the effective date, the appeal puts off the effective date of the decertification.
That is correct, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm kind of getting back to something that you can't talk about. I understand that, that's not my issue. But my point is that somebody, either within your department that does investigations, or you have referred it to some other agency that does investigations, is aware of what's going on with this. Is that a fair question?
Yes, sir. So this is the result of our administrative investigation.
Okay, you refer that to your legal department?
Yes, so our legal department.
It's up to your legal department to refer it to the, and I know that y'all do stuff on your own in that department over there and take action on your own. Or if they feel necessary, they could refer it to an outside agency such as the SBI, or someone, or the Attorney General's Office. Am I on the right path? It's up to your, your legal department.
Yes, sir. So what our legal department's done, they have reviewed our findings. So before we could issue this letter of decertification.
Okay.
Our legal staff, they assigned us, they went to the Attorney General's Office, and the Attorney General's Office has legal staff. The Attorney General's Office reviewed our administrative rules. They reviewed our report.
Okay.
And upon reviewing their rules, and reviewing the report, and all the subsequent documentation, upon review of that, they said that we can move forward with these certifications, that they felt like we were good, we were solid.
I used to work for the state, so I, I understand the process.
Yes, sir.
I just want to be sure that other people understood.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. Yes, sir.
I've got some questions for the county. Have we funded them anything in this year?
In your, excuse me, in your fiscal year 20, funding, no payments have been released to Woodsdale.
This is an audit year per their contract?
Audits were due in the fiscal year 20 last, and we did not receive one for Woodsdale.
Have you got anybody else that wants to?
I believe where they, um, come before they funded in the year that they should have given us the audit.
I think it's 132,000 was the funding. We withheld their second payment pending the completion of the investigation into their certification. When that came back clear in May, I think, we released that second payment.
That includes, that second payment is included in this 132?
Yes, sir.
That was last year's, maybe?
Yes.
I apologize, it's actually fiscal year 19, it moved 123.
I'm sorry. 123.
I guess if we paid for an audit, they still gotta give us information, though.
Yes, we try to work closely with the departments who struggle to get their audits completed. They were not the only ones. And so Doug had paid several site visits to the chiefs, asking for the audits to be turned in, and they had not completed that yet.
Were any of the departments in afternoon audits?
Allensville is also pending an audit.
Have they received funding this year?
Not yet.
I, I will say the, I'm sorry, the two, for, for example, Allensville has had, has contracted a auditor, and they're waiting response back. The information we were getting is that because of the time of year, it's just been delayed, that being the tax season of April. The response I got back from Woodsdale was they had turned their information over to a, an accounting to get prepared to go to an auditor, and they had reached out to an auditor but had not signed any kind of agreement to get that auditor to complete it.
What account are y'all using? James? What accounting are y'all using?
We are using, what did you say, James?
Come forward.
She's in, she's in Oxford, and she has received, received some of the stuff, but she hasn't received all of it yet, and she's working on it.
Are you still this as the president, James?
No, I am. And, uh, I do thank you all for allowing me to speak to this, through this board. I came on board with Woodsdale, on the, the fire department in, in the spring of the last year as the chaplain to, to help them spiritually with their fire department and preemptive. They asked if I would join them as a board member, and I did. And consequently, a month ago, became the president. And to, I came, became the president to address all of these issues that have come to light. We are working diligently on each and every one of them. Some of the information that you guys have received is felonious and erroneous, but, and we will be addressing it. We have, we do, we are getting the audit done and everything else that is needed to be done for the department at this time.
Mr. Walmart, who is the current chief of the department?
James James.
Mr. Walmart, can you provide a copy of a contract that Woodsdale Fire Department is working with an auditor?
Not at this time. But if you will submit a letter, I'll give it to our attorneys, because we have ten attorneys to address this issue that has come before us. Just.
The letter, it would be in the current contract that an audit is required.
Yeah.
That's not a separate letter that needs to be issued?
Yeah, we, I'll get back, I'll get to James and get that to him.
Could you give us the name of the auditor or the firm that you're working with? Just the name?
With the, I know we are, Libby's is, is, is helping us with it.
Mr. Walmart?
Libby's accountant.
Libby's Tax Service here in Roxboro.
She is, she is helping, we have reached out to her. She was our candidate this time.
Got another question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Walmart, what do you see as the future of Woodsdale Fire Department?
I see us coming onboard Woodsdale, just like every other department. We get up to the room, must, must know, and as soon as we, you know, take two steps forward, we take three backwards, people quit because of various reasons. Not only do we, do the, the members quit, but the board members quit as well. So we are, we're currently fluctuating up and down, but we are working diligently, as I said, on this matter. And some of that, as I said, that information that, that you receive is felonious. A disgruntled former firefighter broke into the station, he picked up some information he wasn't supposed to pick up. And, and as a game, we will be addressing all of that.
All right, did that change the facts?
With the, with the fire marshals, it did, because that's what's in their report.
Was that brought to their attention?
They never questioned any of the current board. They questioned the disgruntled employees, but they never asked us any questions.
Well, my main concern with the whole volunteer system is, volunteers are hard to come by.
True that.
Okay, so.
I even took upon myself to take, take train to become, to do something to help them out. So I, I took aid out, took aid out of course, and I was planning on taking more hours so that I can, you know, having been a former firefighter, I was a buddy, buddy of Public Safety Officer, and I do, I do have a issue with firefighting, so I can, I can, nobody uses a plump, I can whip on the plump, hook the hose up.
Well, you know, my, my main concern, I don't know about the rest of the board, but the volunteer system is no stronger than the last volunteer.
True.
And so if they run out, then what's the alternative? And we implemented a larger fire tax this year with the full intention that I intend to see it followed through was to lower the ratings for the whole county. In other words, the fire tax would be less than the reduction that you would get in the insurance. It may take a year or two, but that's what we're working towards.
Yes, sir.
And so the fire tax should pay for itself in that respect. But my, what I have to get straight in my mind now is, do we continue to fund the volunteer system like we've got now? Or do we try to implement a county-wide system that, I mean, if you're gonna spend, you know, three or four million dollars a year, can you make that under one system situation as opposed to volunteers that, you know, I don't know how many calls y'all had to miss because you didn't have anybody there?
We haven't missed any calls.
Okay. They had an equipment failure?
We haven't missed any calls, and, and our equipment is above par.
Okay, well.
That would be my question to either Doug or James, because it was my understanding that some calls had been dispatched to Woodsdale as a primary, and they were called off because either mutual aid or the city of Roxboro beat them there, I guess.
Yes.
That is true, Doug. Are you aware of that, James?
Yeah, yeah. We're, we're not in a quick race. They got their other equipment. If you want to compare us to, to the Roxboro Fire Department, there's no comparison. They have personnel, busted equipment, feed us on every call if they want to.
Oh, I understand that, but I'm just saying, my understanding is that y'all were called off not to even show up because you weren't there. So I'm just trying to verify the room of meaning, I guess, so.
We did respond and did get there and help them, then to take the reports and everything like we were supposed to.
James, as chief, given, since, given that you all were funded last year and have received no funding this year, and there being an appeal process that could go beyond 60 days, are you confident you all will have the funding to continue operations beyond that?
Nope. Nope. Did you, did you, couldn't, it's counted without funding? So you, because you know that question is, I have to have funding.
Further contract had, the audit been replaced, funding would have been issued July 1st. That's why I'm asking, because it's not going to counties again.
I, I just became aware of that, as I said, I just became the president, and I'm finding all of this stuff out date, date to date. So we will get in compliance in time.
All right, to the state representative there, what happened in the meantime? Terms of, can they continue to operate?
Yes, sir. They're, they're still a 9S-rated department up until whether they appeal or if they do not appeal up to October the 8th. If they do not appeal, it goes into effect, the decertification goes into effect October the 8th. If they do appeal, pending whatever the result is of the hearing, they could either be decertified or...
All right, if they are decertified, they can't answer calls?
They will not be recognized by the State of North Carolina as a 9S-rated department. How, what they do after that is up to the relationship that the county decides to have with them, but they will not be recognized as a, as a department. So what that means is that that district will go to Class 10 unprotected.
So your biggest exposure there would be insurance premium as opposed to fire coverage?
Well, actually, it would be, be the protection of the members. One of the members gets hurt on a call, or God forbid, they die on the line of duty, it wouldn't be eligible for line of duty death benefits. You've got workers' comp issues, workers' comp issues that you gotta work out. There's a lot of different things that you gotta work out in terms of what is their legal standing to provide that service within the county? And then what does that expose the county to? And I, I can't speak to what it would expose y'all to liability-wise.
Can you answer that, Mr. Attorney?
Not sure exactly the question is.
If they become decertified, are we liable? If they become decertified, are we liable if they answer phone, answer calls? Where does, uh, where's the line that we either expose, not expose?
I can do some further research, but my first impression is they are a nonprofit corporation that creates in them responsibility for their employees, their volunteers. The state has a program which provides some benefits for certified departments, including, I believe, workers' comp and a death benefit. That workers' comp and death benefit would not be in effect absence a certification. It would then revolve, evolve back on the nonprofit. I do not believe the county has any exposure, but I want to explore that some more, that there is at least a political exposure, which often ties into legal exposure, for the citizens who feel like they have and actually receive the fire services. The contract, I think, is drafted such that there is no liability for the county. There, at least legal liability. So I don't think at this point, and I want to research further, that there would be legal liability against the county, either for the injuries to a firefighter or the absence of protection to the homeowner. I know there have been some lawsuits about protection of homeowners and business owners from fire. Generally, those cases have come that there is no guarantee of services from the fire department or the, the law or the, the local government, unless you begin to do something that they can rely on. Long answer, but it deserves a long answer because it's a complicated legal issue. I need to research further and make sure what the county's exposure might be.
All right, now, they still certified as we speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Until October the eighth, or pending the results of the appeal.
All right, well, from what I've heard, Mr. Womack, and, and you say, uh, we're gonna have to fund them some, I would think, just to keep them in business. Uh, but that's, uh, up to the level to decide that. Missed it. Not real sure what comes first.
I prefer to look at the call volume to see how many calls they're running, how many calls they're actually showing up on, and as far as the citizens in that area, we do have them with fire coverage due to mutual aid contracts and our contract with the city of Roxboro. So I would do them just like Aliceville and everybody else until they get an audit in, uh...
I was doing, Mr. President, permission to Jeff, is when you look at us in that aspect, look at the rest of the...
Right, and so I would hold them the same accountable as we hold in Aliceville until an audit is given, no county fund should be issued.
As a director, first off, I commend every volunteer in this county to give them service for you. This is not a good situation, and it's, you know, it's just some difficulties that are happening. But I need to make you aware of a couple of things to consider. One is the contract. Our contract does tell, ask, tell each one of our fire departments to be in compliance with the state regulations. They are not. Bottom line is, they do not have enough firefighters to answer the calls. They're well below the nineteen. They have been trying for a year and a half or more to get that number up, not two days after they got it, after they lost it. You've got to consider the confidence of how long that's gonna last. If they're not now, they're not in compliance with our contract. That's the bottom line, they're not. And the confidence of the ability for them to manage that department. I think you have that in front of you. I question, I would ask Mr. Attorney to make sure our liability of us allowing contracted service to go out by possibly a service that is not compliant and below standards. That's the liability I would ask for that, and y'all may want to pursue that.
All right, don't go away. How do we fix this problem?
Well, currently, we have...
Even if they want to survive, we still need to come up with some kind of...
Correct, so currently, I have reached out to some company, to boarding fire departments. All three of them have agreed to cover that area should, after October eighth, we go to a temporary time of, of class ten. We, we possibly, we may get that. All three of them, on short-term basis, will cover that area, which they actually covered the area here. It's a secondary, but we kind of agree with some lines. Thirdly, on a long-term, there is a, uh, a fire department out there that is, that would consider a substation in that district that was protect that nine S, uh, service. In order for that to happen, we just have to redo the maps, come up with the contract, and move them as the board reaches the contract.
All right.
I preach a contract will take place thirty days after we give that notice.
All right, when's that decision gonna be made?
When...
I mean, it sounds like we need it to have it placed right now.
Well, the decision on, on the short-term, that can happen today.
But that's not our vote, that's yours, isn't it?
I, I wish, if, I will have it covered area. So if, if they lost it on a short-term, it's just, we have that in place to do that for short-term. For long-term, you know, if you breach the contract, then we can reach out to another department. And that would be taking place thirty days after the notice was given for breach.
All right.
Which can happen, you know, it's, it's hard to stand there and, and want to dissolve or, or work on it, but it's, it's management, it's responsibility. If that happens, that can happen before the October eighth, if you breach, if the attorney feels that what we have today is enough to breach our contract. And then there's another way, excuse me, there is another way that I would rather for the attorney to go over that, for that, for the community. The community can, uh, step in if they wish and dissolve that board, the current board. The other thing that we have discussed is, we don't have a firm board that can't make a decision in our opinion. Uh, it's been discussed between myself and the attorney, uh, they only have three or four board members. That's way below what the constitution, so they can't make a firm vote. They can only report in a board, board meeting if they go by the constitution.
Well, is that engine of itself presenting a liability policy problem? Not only for us, but also them, but for us too?
I'm not gonna speak of liability, I'll leave that for you.
And I will not speak about the liability of the nonprofit corporation, separate issue. I think that in the case of the county's contract, the county, as one of the commissioners has pointed out, has a contract which says that a contract with a certified department, they are at threat of not being certified now. There are lots of indications, I counted seven or eight, uh, indications on the fire marshal office of failure to, uh, perform as required. I think at the very least, there is justification for the board to give the thirty-day notice of breach of the contract. Thirty-day notice, if they get it together, uh, you don't have to carry it out, but you could get the ball rolling by giving the thirty-day notice of the breach, giving them you the authority to breach the contract and move forward after the thirty-day notice. It does, they would be responding to you as they would be responding to the state, except in your case, it's a thirty-day notice. You could extend that if you feel like they're moving forward, but at least would keep you on track to, uh, make sure that the services are there. Doug has indicated that he could, uh, begin the process of having other departments to respond as they are now, that may be a fail-safe device for you as well. Uh, there are, there, there are multiple concerns here legally, I see. You, I do not think that you need, have the authority under what we know now to provide payments because of, of the potential breach that has been exhibited by the work of the fire, of the fire marshal's office.
Question for the state. Uh, upon your investigation with the equipment?
Yes, sir.
Was any found to be non-operational or just, uh, required maintenance and checking of the equipment?
So, the day that we were there on June, when we were there in June, uh, what we noticed was, was the equipment was there. Um, the concern that we had was, was how thorough was it? There were no, there were no annual maintenance laws. We were going strictly off of that. The problem we have is, is, you know, if, if we go out there and we start, we start manipulating their equipment, we, we start checking it and something happens, then it's on us to figure it out. So we're relying on the department's documentation to say that the equipment is serviceable, the equipment is running, and it's ready to go. Um, we, we, you know, the equipment is there, the trucks are there, um, but once again, it's, it's that lack of documentation, and what we see in terms of what's there is what's causing the concern. They have documentation saying that the trucks are, they have documentation saying the trucks were checked off, but once again, what I would go back to is, if you, if you look at, in the report, it shows an example of a sheet that's checked off, okay? Well, if I were to show you twenty-five other sheets and you line them up, the check marks look exactly the same. Everything looks exactly the same. When we interviewed other members, it was, that's not how we do it. These, these are the ways that we do it, and it was not consistent. We, in other words, what we couldn't find is a consistent answer to say, this is how it is. Something as simple as checking an inventory, make sure a truck works, there should be consistency in that. Doesn't matter who you talk to, there should be consistency in that, and we cannot find that consistency.
Chief?
As for maintenance, yearly maintenance?
Put it to the mic, please.
As for yearly maintenance, we have, uh, mechanics come in every year, and they do send us the, uh, the paperwork and everything. So every year, those trucks have been checked by mechanics, certified mechanics. They come in, change the oil, go for truck and everything. As for the check marks, I don't understand what you're saying about check marks. Every time one of those sheets is filled off, another one's put in place, and we go ahead and put the date and, the dates and the person checking beside each line. And what, what you said about the check marks be looking the same, I don't understand that. And as for this, our person who says she wanted to have her name taken off the list?
This girl?
This... She, I have not seen her since January, and she was told to come to meetings to get her training. She didn't, she, she has not been there yet. So the day at the, uh, the first inspection in May, her file was taken aside, and, uh, inspectors were told that this person was not in compliance, and he was laid aside, and she was not counted. Now, she's called in, laid on out for that, and says she want her name taken off. She was not, by, by that point, she was not on there. And as for the, uh, email addresses and the, and the mailboxes, nobody in that fire department has used that email or, or mailing address to these, these other people. That stuff was already in the computer, and it kept jumping from place to place and stuff that we were trying to put in. Nobody has used those emails or, or mailing addresses, period.
As I stated, felonious and erroneous information was obtained and given to the fire marshals, and if they would have questioned one of the board members, current board members, they would have been told they were speaking to disgruntled former firefighter who had asked for that.
All right, what have we got?
That's part of the appeal process with the state. I see the county commissioner is dealing with two issues. That's one, the taxpayer's money, and two, public safety. And I think if Doug has got us covered as far as, uh, coverage with mutual aid departments, and then our contract with the city of Roxboro, then our next duty is to the taxpayer, and until they get an audit or something, uh, then no county fund should be issued. And that goes for Aliceville and whoever else.
Mr. Attorney?
Mr. Chairman and Board, I'll point out to you that the assets, the real property, the personal property, the vehicles, et cetera, are owned by the nonprofit. The county has been funding that, so as Mr. Jeffers says, there's an interest. But the county doesn't have any direct control over that. I think there is a county interest in assuring that those assets continue to be available for the purpose for which they were funded, that is, providing services to the citizens in the area. But you ought to know that the county has no present control over those assets. They have an interest in making sure those assets stay in the county, to be available if we can work this out.
Do we need to take any action on it?
The, the action that you could take at this point is to give the thirty-day notice a violation of contract. That's the action that you have control over right now. The process of the appeal and all that is, is not a county issue. Um, I think Doug and I are ready to move forward with a plan in terms of coverage and trying to prevent that, um, district from going to a ten, should they face that down the road. But in the interim, the appeal process, I think, your, your power is to, um, give the thirty-day notice a violation of contract, should you wish to do that.
Let's give a thirty-day notice in line with the state, so it falls on October eighth. So if they're no longer certified, then the contract with the county is no more out. That's what I would suggest.
My question is, if they filed the appeal, they're still certified until the appeal process is satisfied?
Ron said we can give them more time if we need.
So would you like to give a sixty-day notice that corresponds to the October eighth date? That's probably fifty days.
Notice that corresponds with the resolution of the appeal.
We don't know, because he said they would be...
I know that.
They'll be saying that.
But what I'm saying is that they're still legally allowed to operate until that appeal process is carried through. Am I right, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir, I understand that is the case, as you have their appeal in effect.
I understand you want to put a date on it, but I'm saying that if you, if you don't, if you're gonna give them a notice, and they're still certified by the state, then what you have to do is come back and meet to extend their certification, or if you, if you were to say that your notice coincides with the resolution of the appeal, then you don't have to keep coming back and doing something.
That's clear to me.
Because if eight comes and they appeal it, they're not gonna hear that appeal the first of November, it'll all be the fifteenth of December when they hear it. So if you get set with, with their appeal process is, because they're legally, they're legally in operation until that's satisfied.
I figured by October eighth...
I don't care, I'll go either way.
I figured by October eighth, we would know from the state, whatever the appeal hearing would be, because they have to do within those sixty days as far as putting in appeal. And from what I understood from Ron, then it's up to us if we want to extend to thirty days, sixty days, hundred days. I was just trying to get something in line with them to where there is no appeal or whatever, or everything's done for October eighth, then we coincide with that.
All right, if they give us, present us with an audit, uh, does the audit have to show that they are in compliance?
The audit is one requirement of the contract. Another requirement of the contract is that...
I know, but do they have to pass the audit?
Of the financial, if there, if there are issues related to the audit, you would still withhold funding until the corrective actions had been submitted and resolved?
But if they come back with a favorable audit, uh, then we could go back to your suggestion in looking at possibly funding them something to help them going until this, uh, appeal process is heard, but...
They would, they could potentially still be in violation of your contract.
I understand that, but I'm saying if they are still certified and will be answering calls to Chairman's point a few minutes ago, I'm just not in favor of giving anything until we see that audit, but we can bring that back up once we have an audit and it's favorable.
How many days do we have to give the audit?
When was that due?
The contract is, uh, September first or fifteenth.
That's for...
Well, it's already past due, so...
The audit is actually due...
As quick as you can.
As soon as possible. But in order, but in order for me to release, by contract, release the current one, I have to have everything... mandate, I have to have everything. Uh, there's a bond report I have to get, a list of, uh, rosters, uh, and-
Board members.
So, there's a number of things I have to receive before that-
It's part of the audit, isn't it?
Before that, uh, if, uh, before that check is issued in September, in September, if it didn't look that, April is the deadline.
You don't have to put an obligation to say, oh, uh, every, probably you.
Well, I'm not talking about releasing the entire payment. I'm just saying, something can get by until the hearing gets tested, or they'll be certified from the state. But we can come to that when we get to it. We don't know nothing until we see an audit.
All right. Did you make a motion?
Nope. I don't think we need a motion to, unless you want to serve them.
Can I ask the state one question? Or would they be on a probationary status between now and October eighth, or they're fully certified at this point still?
So, currently, they're still under the probationary status that they were operating under. So, they're nowhere, so until the decertification happens, they're still under probation.
Okay. So, we had withheld payment from them due to a probationary status in the past, so I wanted to clarify that they would still be on probation, um, until pending the outcome of the appeal. I don't know if that changes your mind, I just want to make sure we're working with accurate information.
Thanks, give me, if you're, if you're trying to shut them down, you're doing a pretty good job of it. I'm not ready to write them a check today, but, uh, um, I think the situation bears some kind of consideration. If they're gonna survive, they gotta have some funds. And, you know, if you could give us an audit that was, that cleared you, that would, uh, go a long ways towards us being able to, uh, cover us from a liability. We, if we continue to fund a, a declassified, a certified department, then I think, yes, we would be liable. Uh, I don't think it would be any question. And so, you know, from our standpoint, we, we got to be dealing with primarily the contract. And so, uh, I think the sooner you can get that audit done, the better, if everybody's gonna be. That gives us a much, much better talking point.
Yes, sir.
And just as a reminder to the board, in order for them to survive, they have to have nineteen members or more. And if they're not there, they haven't been there for, stable for a long time, so it's not just only funds.
Well, they've gotta have that to pass out.
Funds won't provide that, so I just want, just, we'll make sure you-
Well, we might talk about bending the rules, we're just talking about them primarily as just doing the paperwork.
That's right.
The audit that we're talking about is a financial audit.
Mm-hmm.
So, that wouldn't include things like rosters and board members and training logs.
But that's on the state. That, that's gonna come from their appeal process. The state's gonna verify if they got nineteen members or not through their, their appeal. If the state decertifies them, it's nothing for us to do to help them survive or anything, because that's, the state has to certify them. So, all I'm talking about is the part that we control, but until this appeal process is taken, they're gonna tell if they got nineteen members, or if they've done training and so on and so on. I mean, hopefully we'll know sooner than later.
And Mr. Foreman, can you get something in place, like says next morning?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you all.
We'll see what we can do for you.
You want a motion to serve them with a letter?
We can't make any promises.
Right. We can't get to the call, and we can't put no gasoline in the trucks.
So, I'll make a motion to, uh, serve them with a letter, reach a contract to coincide with October eighth. And we need to give them more time for the state, give them more time, and we'll do so.
Okay.
And we have received a letter from the Fire Marshal. They just gave us the package. I don't see, I haven't seen anything with that. It just came and presented the package to-
That's true, but you, you know you've got a contract with the county.
Yes, I'm aware.
And as far as we're concerned, that's what we're worried about.
Yes, sir.
What you gotta do for the state, title different situation.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, in order for us to start writing checks again, we gotta make our contract and get in compliance.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any more discussion? Not all of the table say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Jones. Thank you, Jones.
Good morning. This, this morning I have an appeal for a late listing penalty. It's from Spontec, one of our larger corporate clients. I would like to offer an overview about how the listing process works and give you some information from his background. Uh, page thirty-six of your agenda packet, I did write some of this down. Late listing penalties apply to personal property. So, personal property is anything other than real estate that you would list. This amounts to just under half a billion dollars in value. So, listing process is very important, and that does not include any estate or brokerage properties. So, each year in December, we sign out about eight thousand listing forms. That's to give people a form in their hands to fill out, so they can, we can get that back to us. Uh, these listing forms have to be returned back to us before January thirty-first. There is a room in the statute to have an extension. The extensions have to be received before January thirty-first, before the listing time is up. Last year, we had two-hundred-and-ninety extensions that we did receive, and all those were granted. And they had to April fifteenth to fill out the listing form. Um, one late request for extension, which you see, that was from Spontec, and of course, we denied that because it was late. Um, each year, we have numerous late listings. Uh, this past year, we had twenty-two-hundred-and-thirteen late listings files, so twenty-two-hundred people received a ten percent penalty. Uh, of the two-hundred-and-ninety extensions we gave and granted, thirty of those were also late and received a penalty for being late there. Um, there always are some very small listings. We did have two large listings this year, other than Spontec. One was just under, just over seven thousand dollars. Other ones just under five thousand dollars. And twenty-two were between a hundred and four hundred dollars. Seventeen hundred of them were less than ten dollars. So, some, most of them are very, very small, but still a ten percent late listing. Um, in the comparison, we've had one company over the years has late listed many times, five different years, and actually totaled up one seventy-nine thousand also paid late listing. So, it's not uncommon to have a late listing. It is uncommon to have a big, large one like we're looking at today. Uh, since it's applied as a percentage, it's always a very fair system. Um, it's, the percentage is applied on the untamed vehicle that may be parked near your yard, it's also done on, on big equipment lines. You've heard of late listing penalties in the past, but you haven't heard very many of them. It's been about half a dozen since I met with the tax office. Um, all of those have been, have been upheld, but we have never released a late listing penalty. However, we never had one this large either. Just a note, y'all have addressed some releases in the past and with refunds, and, and that situation, you can be held personally liable if you release a refund on them, you should not. This does not fall under that category. This is a totally different category. It's under one oh five three twelve, I include statutes for review. Another interesting thing about this is it cannot be appealed to the state. So, once we make a decision here, that's the final decision. So, there's no other room for, uh, relief of, in this board. Uh, on the Spontec specific case, their late listing penalty is forty-six thousand two twenty-eight sixteen. Uh, just to remind you, the late listing period was ending June, uh, January thirty-first, which was a Thursday. Uh, we sent a listing form out December twenty-eighth. We did not get that listing form back on January thirty-first and did not get an extension request until February fifth, which is the ones used after that. Just three business days later. Um, of course, the extension for, requested extension had to be denied, and thus following general statute one oh five three oh seven, see, you have to ask for extension during the listing period. Even one day late would have been insufficient. Um, we had to wait till the tax rate was set in order to compute the penalty cost as a percentage of the tax, which means the appeal could not be heard immediately. It had to be after the tax bill was computed and delivered. And at that point, the company had thirty days to file their appeal, and they are timely filed, so that's what we're here today. The county assessor from our position cannot waive the penalty. The, the power strictly lies with this board. On page forty is a letter from Spontec, CFO, actually wrote a letter, and all the facts of that are correct. Uh, there was no attempt to, to void, uh, void paying taxes, no tax evasion. It was an oversight on their part. However, on other oversights, we withheld the penalty. Uh, Mr. Daniel Sharon is here this morning. I'm sure you have some questions for him, and I'm sure he has some information provided.
For their letter, Russell, would you speak to the fact that they stated they have been given it by April fifteenth, not by January thirty-first?
They always submit their property listing by April fifteenth and not by Janu- January thirty-first is a correct statement. However, before January thirty-first, they had always asked for an extension till April fifteenth. April fifteenth is the latest we are allowed to get extensions for, uh, statute. So, this is the first year they have not asked for an extension on time. And if they have asked for one three days before they did, I would grant that for them. The letter is very factual. They do a good job of presenting the case. Uh, Mr. Daniel Sharon, I'll ask a few things you want to add to that.
Anybody got questions? Well, Ms. Sharon, if you would come forward and-
Yeah, I mean, it was a slip-up, so, um, it's a lot of money. Um, you know, we've been compliant, we weren't trying to budge anything, um, yeah, I mean, we, we think we've been good to the county, um, we like the county, we want to continue to expand in the county in the future. Um, so, you know, if this was, you know, some percent or something like that, I mean, we sometimes have penalties from the state, the IRS, other things, usually it's kind of miniscule amount. Um, this is just, um, you know, it's, if it was some kind of small penalty, we wouldn't ask, but, um, almost fifty thousand dollars is, um, a lot of money for us. So, we request leniency on this issue. That's it, basically. I mean, it just is, um, it was a slip-up. It is very hard for us to, I mean, it's not very hard, but it's, it's a lot of, it's, the listing is quite long and, yeah, I mean, we have really no excuse, um, for, you know, we should have, uh, sent in a request and we forgot, and that's it, basically.
Anybody got questions from, from Sharon? If not, what's the pleasure of the board?
Russell, you did say we have to close this penalty on companies of this size and are just anyone else's, correct?
We've never had one this size for a single year. We've had others that totaled up more than this. We had one company that was late five years, not five consecutive years, but five years total, and they paid over seventy-nine thousand dollars in penalties. Um, you know, deadlines are very important to the tax office. If you're one day late paying in January, it's two percent. That's by statute, and we don't ever veer from that rule. Same with this. We look at post-mars, we are processing listing forms daily, so we know when they arrive. Twenty-two-hundred other citizens in the same situation, not this amount of money.
Loop up all the penalty.
Any discussion? Not all of the table say aye? Any opposed? All right. Uh, let's see, Ms. York?
Yes. Good morning again, commissioners. Um, you'll recall during the budget process, um, we funded the implementation of the compression study for employee salaries, and we were able to divide that into two phases. So, the first phase went into effect, uh, for half of our workforce effective July fifth. And we have noticed as the implementation has been applied to the, um, pay scale, that the recommendation of the compression study-
What was the decision respective?
To assess the penalty.
To what?
To assess the penalty.
What does that mean?
Pay it.
Do we need to pay it?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Can I add something to that? Before you make that decision?
Already made. We're pouring water, we're on another agenda item.
I just want to say that, um, this could have, um, mortgage, um, effects on future investment account. So, if you want to, um, take that into consideration, future investments and cards. So, um, I don't know if that, uh, makes any difference, but, uh, we would consider this, um, quite a strong hit to us. Um, not, uh, not, you know, faith, uh, behavior toward us.
Now, go ahead, Mr. Chairman, continue with the agenda, please.
Commissioners, as I was saying, when you implemented the compression study, one of the impacts was that it eliminated the hiring rate for new employees. And so, we're asking that we, um, have the authority from the board to make sure that the pay plan, um, is consistent with the compression study. So, right now, it's not. Uh, there are no more hiring rates when we're bringing in new employees into those departments that have had the, uh, compression study implemented. So, we would like to do an addendum to our personnel policy to clarify that when new employees are brought in during this one year, the addendum would allow us to bring them in at the minimum rather than the hiring rate. And when you do that, it eliminates the need for a probationary increase, which is a five percent increase, because we're bringing them in five percent above the hiring rate at the minimum. So, the probationary increase would go away, and we're asking for the ability to start the merit pay program at the one-year work anniversary for those new employees.
All right, well, the, uh, probationary period still exists?
The probationary period would still exist, yeah, but thank you for, uh, clarifying that. It just would not come with a five percent increase. So, employees do either a nine or a twelve-month probationary period, depending on whether it's a department head position, those are the twelve months, or nine months for, um, other employees. So, that, that would still continue, just not the probationary increase. So, at the one-year work anniversary, employees would be eligible for merit pay, which is either a two percent or three percent, or zero if they are not, uh, meeting the requirements of their job. And then, when we do phase two of the compression study, we would then transition the rest of the workforce over to the same pay plan, and everybody would be consistent. So, essentially, no more hiring rate, no more probationary increases. Merit pay would kick in at the one-year, uh, anniversary mark, barring the successful completion of their probationary period.
What is the trouble there maybe?
It's either nine months or twelve months, and it allows, um, employees to serve sort of at a at-will status to make sure that they are the right fit for the position, that the supervisor is pleased with their performance, and if there are performance issues during that time, the employee can be terminated without cost.
Any questions?
Move forward with the line of your request.
Any discussion?
Do you have anything to add, Sonia? No.
All on the table say aye? Any opposed? All right. Ms. Reeves?
Thank you. Today I present to you Lieutenant Ricky Hughes' request for reappointment on the juvenile crime prevention council. He has been serving, um, in the seat representing the chief of police. The chief of police has, has, um, acknowledged this request and agrees to Lieutenant Hughes' continuing to serve in this capacity.
Move to a point, Mr. Hughes.
Any questions? All on the table say aye?
Aye, aye.
All right. I don't have anything on the championship board.
I don't believe I have anything.
Any other commissioners here, any?
I want to make a comment. September the twenty-sixth is the Carcar Council of Government's annual banquet, and this year will be in Person County and, uh, Festival House, this is the twenty-sixth, uh, chair going, I'm going out as chair this year, so they have it in use in the county, however who's the chair of the boards.
It's September, when?
Twenty-sixth.
Brother, did you send me an email to remind me that?
Twenty-sixth.
Especially around six and four.
You should get a note, you get a notice, too.
We'll get an invitation.
Anybody else getting any?
We want to remind the citizens of the Medicaid change that'll be happening in our state, and that we will be in that first region to do so, and that the state has our, the health providers have put an outreach coordinator, uh, I think housing DSS, to assist citizens with looking at their plans and picking one that's appropriate for them. Um, maybe- They will need to do so, I believe, by September 21st, if not, the state will be thinking a plan for you. So it's not a DSS program, so if you call DSS, they're going to give you a 1-800 number to call, but they do have an outreach coordinator housed at the DSS to assist citizens with this, choosing their plan.
Anybody aye? Not, I made a motion to go into closed session for General Statute 143-318, to instruct public body staff on negotiating a position concerning a position to be taken by on behalf of the public body, negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract with the following individuals permitted: County Manager Heidi York, look to the board friend Reed, Sean Akar, Laura Jensen. I'd like...
Would you like to stay for the closed session? It's up to you all. I'm not sure we're quite ready to...
I would go with us, and then you just stay there, something afterwards, and hope that's...
All right. Go ahead, motion.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right. Man, I'll wait till you get that go. I'll wait till you get that go.
Too weak to hit it. You kicked my ass.
I'll wait till you get that go.
Anyway, I made a motion to go into closed session. All in favor say aye?